Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-four through January two thousand and twenty-five. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, PrincetonNJ.gov/calendar. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and the Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions button or the raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. Countdown clock will be used to help speakers keep track of time, and speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. An appropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer. Ms. Capizoli.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Ms. Nuka. Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter.
Here.
Ms. Sacks. Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you.
Announcements. Any announcements from, oh, let the record show that Ms. Nuka is here. Any announcements from board members or staff? Justin?
Yes, I have a few. Thank you, Madam Chair. And good evening, members of the Board and members of the public. So to begin, we will have a special meeting next Thursday night. We anticipated that when we were setting the calendar earlier in this year. Obviously, there were some holidays at the beginning of October, so we originally only scheduled one meeting. Maybe that was wishful thinking. But knowing full well that we had a few Thursdays later in the month that we could use. So we will use that one. There's an application for the Institute for Advanced Study, one of their libraries. Just prior to that seven o'clock meeting, the Board will have an executive session at six thirty PM for a legal briefing. If you cannot attend the six thirty meeting or the seven PM scheduled meeting, please contact Carrie or myself. So also what that means is we have planning board meetings on four of five Thursdays, including tonight. So basically, from tonight, five Thursdays except for Halloween. So thank you for coming. Thank you for volunteering. Appreciate it. And then just the last announcement I have right now is that there's a House Genealogy event at the library next Tuesday from seven to eight thirty. It's presented by the, by our Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the Library, the Historical Society of Princeton, and the Witherspoon Jackson Historical and Cultural Society. And the event is really about how you can research the history of your home. It's an in-person event at the library at seven PM next Tuesday. Like I said, there doesn't appear to be a YouTube livestream, but oftentimes the library does that as well. So thank you, Madam Chair.
That's interesting. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, subcommittee reports. We, do we have a report from Minor Site Plan Committee?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yep. Yes. So the Minor Site Plan Committee just met yesterday, and we reviewed an application from the university to relocate and reconstruct the College Road Arch that is adjacent to Springdale Road. Some of you may know that the arch was partially disassembled about, I think about twenty years ago because of multiple truck impacts, trucks hitting and passing through. So the university has this plan to move the arch a bit and to raise it up a little bit and reconstruct it. And the Board will be hearing this application because there are some setback variances that are required as part of the application. But the Site Plan Committee did recommend classification as a minor site plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next up, we have minutes. We have two sets of minutes from last January, January fourth and January eighteenth. They were both regular meetings. Any comments or suggestion edits to these minutes?
I wanted to advise that Mr. O'Donnell brought to my attention on page seven, prior to the closing of the public vote. It doesn't read properly, so I included the word no. So being that there's no members wishing to speak. And then, yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Owen. Sharp eyes, as always. Mr. Muller, go ahead.
Just on page one of January four, under reorganization of the Board, and it says, Ms. Capizoli stated nominating committee, Capizoli, McGowan, O'Donnell polled the members of the Board. Is it polled the members of the Board? Julie, or should it be members of the committee?
They polled the members of the Board so they can get their vote for the Chair and Vice Chair.
Well, they actually.
Not just the committee.
We're the non, yeah.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Okay. There were no other. Excuse me?
Everyone was present that night.
Okay, and Julie, were you moving the minutes?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Who would like to second? Thanks, Mr. Cohen. Minutes, we can do all in favor, right?
Yes.
Yes, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you. On to January eighteenth. Another regular meeting. Any comments or corrections to those minutes?
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell also advised that the vote was wrong for twenty-one Wiggins, although Mr. Bodikheimer seconded the vote, he was not included in the vote, so I made that correction.
Thank you. Thanks again, Owen.
Yes.
Would someone like to move those? Thanks, Mr. O'Donnell, and seconded by Mr. Taylor. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have discussions. I believe the first item, the master plan appendix, the stormwater management mitigation plan. Is this, this is a hearing, is it not? Mr.
Yeah.
Mr. Lesko and Jerry Muller?
Yeah, it's a formal hearing, and this staff has gone through all the requisites of providing for notice, et cetera.
Right, great. So I'll turn to Mr. Lesko first, and then we'll hear from Jim Purcell and possibly Deanna Stockton. Welcome to both of you. It's nice to see you back. And and then after the Board has had a chance to ask questions, et cetera, we'll have, we'll see if any members of the public wish to weigh in. Justin?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. So as was alluded to, what's before you right now is a stormwater management mitigation plan that would be adopted as an appendix to our master plan. So we did all the noticing, similar to what we do for the full master plan hearing, you know, ten months ago. I'll let Jim cover a lot of the content in this, you know, really summarize the seven-page document. But what I want to point out is if I could share my screen, and Jerry, I don't know if we'll need to put this as an exhibit. You think we do? This is page one twenty-five of our adopted master plan.
Yeah, let's make that exhibit a PB one.
Okay. So I'm just showing this real quick. This is the utility element of the master plan that was adopted last year. And particularly, it's the utility element which features a municipal stormwater management plan per the municipal land use law. If you look within that stormwater management plan, it includes this information about the mitigation plan. That's essentially what was put in your packet and put on file, that seven-page document we'll be talking about tonight. As you can see, the mitigation plan was being produced last year when we were working on the master plan. And here's just kind of a brief description of why we need to do it and why we do it this way, you know, particularly as part of the master plan. And it's really so we comply with our municipal MS4 permit, which I'm sure Jim will go into more of what that means. So without further ado, I will hand it over to Jim unless there are any questions for me at this time, and hopefully I didn't lead us down the wrong path already.
I doubt that you did, because you had a page of the master plan up there. So how could you have led us down the wrong path? I do want to ask quickly, Mr. Muller, do our, do Justin and Jim need to be sworn in?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it definitely should be. Justin and Jim, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear with the firm, do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give would be the truth?
I did.
So sworn. Or affirmed.
Okay.
Sworn. I swear.
Go ahead, Jim Purcell. Thanks for being here tonight.
Planning Board members, I'm Jim Purcell. I'm the Assistant Municipal Engineer for Princeton, and I'm here to discuss the Princeton Stormwater Management Mitigation Plan. As Justin just pointed out, it is a requirement to have a stormwater management mitigation plan in place in order to grant waivers of any of the requirements in the Stormwater Control Ordinance. And we've been working on this for quite a while, as you saw that we were, we had a draft of it in June of two thousand and twenty-three. It's gone through a lot of iterations and legal review in order for us to get to this point of adoption as an appendix to your master plan. Essentially, the stormwater mitigation plan is a, an outline, providing for criteria when mitigation is necessary. And mitigation may be necessary at times for compliance with the Stormwater Control Ordinance and the state DEP requirements, when a particular project may not be able to meet the strict requirements of water quality management, water quantity management, or stormwater recharge. The plan is laid out in such a way that prior to being able to be granted a waiver, the applicant must demonstrate that they have done everything practicable to meet the requirements on site. It is not a a process in which they can simply come and say, I can't do it, so you must grant us a waiver. They must demonstrate that they can meet our requirements through a number of different methods, one of which would be to reduce the size and impervious coverage on a site, or to identify additional areas where they could provide for additional stormwater management. And only after they can show, they can demonstrate that it cannot be done on site, can they then look to meet the mitigation plan. The mitigation plan, I want to point out, does not identify any specific projects or any specific areas. That may be something we look to do in the future as we look at our overall watershed management plan and determine where we may need to, as a municipality, establish areas that have already experienced detrimental impacts that we can mitigate for by the use of this plan. The plan sets out the criteria by which an applicant must identify a location, identify the sensitive receptors that are being impacted by the inability to meet our stormwater ordinance on site, and demonstrate that there are no impacts on any sensitive receptors on the mitigation site. They, there's language in there.
And Jim, if you could just explain to the Board what a sensitive receptor is in case.
Well, sensitive receptors, okay. Sensitive receptors could be habitat. It could be trout-producing waters, for example. Lakes, ponds, other waterways that could be susceptible to algal blooms because of high nutrient content. The drinking water supplies are sensitive receptors. Waterways that already are degraded due to pollutants that, you know, could be sensitive to additional pollutants being added are category one waters. The Stony Brook is listed as a category one water. It is the highest quality water classification in the state of New Jersey, and every tributary to that is considered category one. So any degradation of that is not allowed. And then, of course, from a stormwater quantity viewpoint, any downstream structures, whether they be residential homes, commercial buildings, bridges, culverts, those could be identified as sensitive receptors. It's any receptor from an environmental and structural and infrastructure standpoint that could be harmed due to not meeting our requirements of either reduction or quality, quantity or quality reductions, or even our aquifers are sensitive receptors. If we cannot, if a site cannot recharge based up to the hundred percent of the current recharge rate. So it lays out the methods that can be used to do the mitigation, whether it be for quality or quantity or recharge. And just excuse me, I'm scrolling through it. And, and it is, it is set up so that it has the mitigation procedures that should be followed, depending on whether or not you're trying to mitigate for quality, quantity, or recharge. The other part of the plan that I want to point out is that the mitigation should occur within the drainage area where the site project is considered. And ideally, it would be upstream. You would mitigate upstream of where your site is, so the applicant should demonstrate that they're finding a location upstream of their project in order to have the, have that shortfall mitigated even before it gets to their project. It also identifies that even within the same drainage area, the mitigation project should not discharge to a different, say, tributary of this, of a stream, or to the branch of a stream. It should be the same tributary that the site would be normally discharging to, so that the mitigation is throughout the entire reach of that branch of the, of the watershed in the stream. I already see David Cohen has a question, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. So I just, I wanted to flush out a little bit more. The fact that this mitigation plan does not identify specific projects. Essentially, you know, my understanding of what's useful about it, even without identifying projects, is that applicants can identify projects, right? So if an applicant, if somebody wants to do a building, and they can't deal with the stormwater on their site, before we adopt this, there's nothing they can do. But once we've adopted this, they can go and try and find a neighboring property owner who might be willing to have some stormwater green infrastructure on their property that would help, that would mitigate the stormwater from the applicant's property. So that's all by way of asking a question, which is, assuming we do at some point add specific suggested projects, and Jim, you alluded to that. Is there a sort of an interplay between, like, we might want to do those specific projects for the sake of the community, but then that would make them no longer available to a developer who needs a project for mitigation? I don't know if I'm being clear, but can you reflect a little bit about, like, if there's a project, if there's a proposed project in the mitigation plan, and the municipality undertakes it sort of of its own accord, is there any way then for there to be a record of the mitigation that was done, and a subsequent developer could pay, sort of reimburse the municipality for work that was done and take credit for that?
Yes, but let me, let me, let me address that. In the, in the current version of this mitigation plan, the answer to that is simply no. However, it is worthwhile considering, continuing to consider how we mitigate for the detriments that we've already seen, or, or maybe an impact in the future. We are considering the kind of thing that you're talking about, and I, and I'll use as an example, the state's Wetland Mitigation Bank program. So suppose that we find an opportunity to provide for stormwater water quantity control on the Stony Brook, or on Harry's Brook, which is the, you know, flashiest stream that we have. And we decide to implement that ahead of time. I'm just giving an example. Deanna and I haven't even talked about this much. We could implement that project, and the cost of that project, we could identify as a, as a bank, right? A future project in that watershed could buy into that and purchase credits or some sort of way of doing that. That's not in this mitigation plan. That is a future consideration. And also, we may identify mitigation plans that we currently don't have the resources to construct. But if we were to set up some system where developers could pay into a fund that could eventually pay for that, we might consider that again.
Could that be part of a stormwater utility, perchance?
That could be part of a stormwater utility.
For those on the Board who don't know, we're currently studying the potential of having a stormwater utility in Princeton as a mechanism for paying for stormwater infrastructure.
In a way that's fair.
Yes.
So yeah, that's really, thank you for that question and that exchange, because that's, that's really interesting. So of course, it would still need to be in the same drainage area, which in this case is defined as a sub watershed?
Yes, Huck fourteen is a sub watershed of the watersheds in New Jersey, and it's hydrologic unit code. And the only reason it's hydrologic unit code, it's, it's defined based on the the number that is assigned to it, which has fourteen digits.
Am I? I'm cutting you off.
But we have.
No, I don't.
We have five, right?
People are interested in that.
We have five, we have five Huck fourteens within Princeton, so.
Okay. Our, thank you very much, Jim. Are there questions from, oh, I see your hand up, Freddie. Freddie, and then Jack Taylor. Ready, Pearl Mutter first?
Yeah, I'm now kind of confused. I'm very familiar with the Freshwater Wetlands Bank. I practiced environmental law for a long time. But I'm confused now as to what would be included. I now know what's not included, but I'm not clear as to what somebody could actually do now for mitigation. Could you clarify that a little bit more?
Well, what they would have to do, first of all, the first step is demonstrate that they can't do it on site.
Right, I understand.
And there's, and there's a framework set out in this plan for what they need to do to convince you they cannot do it on site. And then there's a framework in here that says you need to find a location within the same watershed. And you have to negotiate purchase easements, whatever you need in order to be able to do a project, and you have to physically construct that project to mitigate for the shortfall on your site. So we leave it completely up to the applicant. The onus is on the applicant to find a site, develop a design that meets the criteria, enter into the agreements, pay for the purchase of the easements, and it will need to have a perpetual easement on it for maintenance purposes. And, and also, they cannot develop their project and get a CO on their project, get sign off on the, on the final construction of their project until they've built that mitigation project as well. So they have to be built simultaneously.
Okay, I understand.
All right. Thanks for that. Jack Taylor?
Yeah, I found initially that it was difficult conceptually to put in perspective what in fact we were considering tonight. So I very much appreciate David Cohen's initiative. I have a better sense. But still, for example, in the body of the document, under mitigation project requirement, page three, there was a reference, for example, quote, to special water resource protection areas, which do not exist in Princeton, but the standards for an SWRPA cannot be waived in a municipal mitigation plan. I read that and realized that I really didn't have a clue what that had to do with why we were considering the document. And it may not be important now, but I'm assuming that anything in the document that requires a written statement has importance. So excuse me, Jim, I thought I would ask.
No, no, and when I reread that tonight, just before this meeting, I said, I know I'm going to get a question on this. So the state.
You're welcome, Jim.
The state has the ability to designate areas that are special water resource protection areas. And although there's nothing in Princeton that is an SWRPA, the, the, the potential exists. And since the potential exists, we put it into the stormwater mitigation plan that if that happens sometime in the future, you will not be able to do a mitigation project. So that's basically what that paragraph is saying.
But who, who sets up an SWRPA? Is that the Planning Board and municipality initiative?
The state of New Jersey does. New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Justin had a question, I guess.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Jack. Do you, is that?
Does that satisfy?
That answer it?
Okay.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, great. Thank you. Justin?
Yes, I don't have a question. I just want to remind the Board, I think this is pertinent to some of the comments that have come up already, that, you know, the Planning Board can always amend, change, update, you know, anything in our master plan, including appendices, you know, excuse me, through a process like this one. And I think as the, we start to see this kind of institutional or cultural shift to ongoing planning, we will probably do that much more in the future rather than having documents for twenty-seven years.
Madam Chair, if I could ask Jim a question?
Yes.
I saw that one of the techniques, as I understood it, that had to be used if others could not, would be a reduction in the scale of a project. But how do you grapple with that? I mean, let's say if it's an eight-lot subdivision. But how do you grapple with that? I mean, let's say if it's an eight lot subdivision. Do they have to go down, say, to one cuz they can't do it otherwise? I mean, it seems to me when, when devil's in the details and it gets a little tough here.
Well, I, I the, the ultimate arbiter of that is gonna be the planning board. So if an applicant comes to you and says, wants to do an eight lot subdivision. They need to demonstrate either they can meet all the requirements or what that subdivision will look like in order to meet all the requirements if they can't do it. So, you know, and, and somewhere in between, they're going to argue that it's economically infeasible. Which is not an excuse to not meet stormwater management. But it's economic infeasible for them to do the project at, say, a four lot subdivision. Well, the planning board may I, 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 well, I guess not, I guess not. It doesn't really matter. Um. That it is gonna be a sticky wicket. That's the hardest part of it. Um, ninety nine percent of the time, you're gonna find that an applicant's gonna come to you and say, I found a place, a location offsite that I can do this project on in order for them to, to meet the project. This provision is in here more for site development purposes where somebody may wanna come in and completely cover their lot with a warehouse and a parking lot. Well, they can easily sh- uh, scale back on that project so that they can provide for the stormwater management. Uh, the parking lot can be reduced in size. The size of the warehouse can be reduced in size. So what we're trying to get here is a um, a best size fits all kinda thing, not, well, best size fits the site kinda thing. Uh, where you know, you, you just, you're not going to be able to completely cover your site with, with asphalt and, and roof material anymore. You have to set aside some areas in order to provide stormwater management. And that's been happening for decades anyway, where we tell you you know, with, back when we had structural requirements, you had to build a detention basin, most you know, most subdivisions went with, I'm gonna have seven lots and one on, one other lot that's gonna have the detention basin. Um, this is going to be kinda similar. Um, you know, you may not be able to do that eight lot subdivision anymore. You may have to make it seven.
I mean, there's really ways of using permeable pavement to absorb and green roofs and stormwater planters and other things that you know, even on a, you know, heavily covered, um, you know, what a, a lot that's almost entirely started, starting out as impervious cover can be made more absorbent without shrinking the overall scale of the project.
There's gonna, there's gonna be a whole slew of solutions that are gonna come in front of you.
And I, I, my understanding is that a, uh, um, developer, you know, property owner might be able to get eighty percent of the way onsite and use the offsite for the remaining twenty percent of the obligation. It's not an all or nothing thing.
It's, yeah, it's for the shortfall in meeting the requirements.
But, but, and Jim, I thought you made a, a really important point when you said what this is really going to compel is a lot of thinking and planning at the beginning.
Yep, yeah, really good point.
Certainly improvement over the current si- situation.
Right.
Yes.
Because right now there's nothing that you can do, uh, you know, if you can't do it on your site, you're done.
Yeah.
Um, Paula Venuka?
Um, thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, so a, a question, um, on this, so the mitigation project, if it's done offsite, has to be on a site within the municipality, right? That's
Within the watershed.
The same drainage area within the municipality.
So within the same drainage area.
Yeah.
Within the same municipality. And so there's no, I mean, the drainage areas sometimes do cross municipalities, right? So how would we deal with a situation where maybe someone is at the border of town? Um, and they want, they propose something that maybe crosses municipal boundary.
Their mitigation project has to be in the same drainage area and in our municipality.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I can provide you an example. Let's say somebody wants to develop right along Van Horn Brook, which just goes into Montgomery over on, close to Route two oh six. If they wanna develop that, there's a lot right there at the corner of Herrentown Road and, um, and Mount Lucas Road. Um, say they come in with a development. And if they can't meet the requirements, we would require them to provide a mitigation plan and, and the recommendation is, because sometimes it's not possible, that they would have to go upstream. So maybe they'd go to the behavioral health center up there and say, listen, we want, we need to mitigate what we're doing down here. And can we purchase some of your property or get an easement on some of your property to put in some green infrastructure? Up, up, upstream within, on the same brook. So that's just an example of how they would, how it would happen, simplified.
Okay. And I'm just curious, how does this compare to the stormwater management mitigation plan of, of surrounding municipalities?
This is a relatively new, a relatively new requirement.
So everyone's trying to grapple with this.
Yeah, many, I mean, the, the DEP puts out guidance, guidelines for, um, creating a mitigation plan. Um, but, um, most towns, I think, do not have them.
Also, the Fed, if they've been doing something in the past, they very well may be familiar with it from wetlands. The, the state does have the similar kinds of things, but they don't have it clearly at the municipal level.
Yeah, okay.
I will, um, I, I, I will say that I have seen a couple of them. And this one is more robust than the ones that I have seen. The DEP, um, guidance is very minimal. And so it, you can write a very minimal plan. Ours, ours, uh, and it's taken us, like I said, a long time. The Flood and Stormwater Commission took this on as their uh, as one of their tasks and worked on this for quite a while before we handed it over to the attorneys to, uh, review it and, and compare it and make sure that we're gonna meet DEP, uh, requirements.
And to Palavie's question, a few of us on this call, we're actually at a meeting, was that yesterday? Uh, convened by the Watershed Institute, um, with some of our colleagues in the Lower Millstone Watershed, uh, which stretches all the way up to Manville or past it, uh, to discuss regional approaches. Which we should be doing for all of planning, but especially water.
A heavy lift.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Justin and James.
Uh, other questions for Jim? Before I open up for public comment. It's actually, um, a good segue to start public comment. Um, there's one hand up right now. Any, any members of the public? Uh, and there are seven members of the public in attendance. Anyone who would like to speak? Um, please raise your hand now. We'll bring over Stuart Lieberman first and then um, whoever is, uh, on the line or in the Zoom on behalf of the Watershed Institute. And, uh, Stuart is, uh, a chair of the Flood and Stormwater Commission in Princeton. Stuart, welcome. You know the drill. You'll need to, um, uh, unmute yourself and activate your camera and then Mr. Muller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand?
Okay. I'm at a train station in Miami right now.
Is it flooding? Is it flooding? Are they?
No, 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 we're dry right now. We're dry, but I, I just, the worst part is the Yankees are losing. That's the biggest thing.
Yeah, three to one.
Makes me happy.
Muller, I certify to tell the truth, uh, and, uh, and, and, uh, and I affirm that I will do so.
Okay, we will make do with your picture.
Thank you very much. Um, I just wanna, uh, thank the board, uh, that I, for, excuse me, the planning board for entertaining this. It's an important document. Um, I know that we worked on it for a long time and, uh, I think it's important. The, and, and I, I do hope that this gets approved. The only thing I wanna say is, is that this is not a get out of jail card. And the norm should not be that we're doing anything less than what the stringent DEP and Princeton stormwater regulations require. This should be something that's an exception and it really ought to be a, 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 almost a rare exception. Our stormwater regulations in Princeton are very strong and we should be proud of that. And of course, the DEP regulations are strong, but Princeton's are really strong. DEP changes their regulations about every three years. They change them and they get stronger and stronger. So I, the, the concept, you know, it's not wrong to say to somebody, you know what, your project's just too big. And that's the easiest way to comply very often. You know, people don't have an inherent right to come in with the biggest, biggest project they can dream of just because the zoning allows for it. Our stormwater regulations do have restrictions on development size. And it's important that we never lose sight of it. And I don't think, Madam Chair, the board will lose sight of it. I just wanted to say that it's important going forward that this tool is there, but it's not a get out of jail card. And it should be used only in the most, you know, the minimal, it should be used in a minimal amount of times. We need to adhere to our strong stormwater commitment in Princeton. So that's what I wanted to say. And I thank you very much, uh, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I'm gonna catch.
Read on all points.
Thank you.
Have a good trip, Stuart.
Uh, Mr. Pissaro, Mike Pissaro from the
Yeah, he need, he needs to turn his video back on. I turned it off, so I'm sorry about that. Um, I have to ask him, so. Thank you.
And, uh, you're still muted. There you go, great.
Sorry about that.
Um, so this is a here, yeah, we need to swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do. Thank you very much. My name is Mike Pissaro. I'm the Policy Director for the Watershed Institute. Um, I think Stuart said absolutely everything I was going to say. Um, I do wanna thank the, you know, Flood and Stormwater Committee and, you know, the Princeton Township Professionals. And David for really shepherding this through to where we are. This is probably one of the best, if not the best, uh, mitigation plans I've seen in the state. Most of them are boilerplate. Um, and as Stuart mentioned, now this is not a get out of free jail card and I, I really do like the provision that says you have to rejigger your, your project if it's too big and you cannot meet the stormwater requirements onsite. I mean, the, the DEP rules and these, this, this plan talks about technically impracticable. Um, and so if it's practical to reduce your project, you could very easily s- see it a, a situation where you have that seven or eight lot subdivision. And the worst possible lot to put the stormwater is the one where the applicant wants to put it. Uh, and therefore, um, requiring it to go back to the drawing board and making the stormwater work where it can work in living with those consequences ultimately leads to a better project. Uh, a, you know, less problems from a stormwater perspective for Princeton and everyone downstream from Princeton. Uh, and, you know, this would be very consistent with the township's policies with its master plan and ordinances in place. So uh, again, I wanna thank the board, the committee and, uh, the professionals for getting us to where we are. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mike Pissaro, and thanks for everything you do with the Watershed Institute, which is a really terrific partner to the municipality and noodling through a lot of these things.
Thank you.
Um, and Mike touched on a, a word that's really, uh, that has been debated a lot over the years, practicable. Uh, which does not, is not the same as practical. You know, it's about whether something can be done, not whether it's convenient. Uh, not whether it's, you know, meets someone's uh, definition of, of practical. It's, it's a higher bar than that. So, um, it's always comforting. Uh, any other members of the public who wish to speak? I'm not seeing any hands go up. We still have seven people in attendance. Um, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask if there are any other questions or comments from um, from board members or comments from staff before we take action. Um, I'm not seeing any. So the action to be taking, taken, excuse me, is um, a motion to adopt this, uh, document as a um, an appendix to our twenty twenty-three comprehensive master plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion? I see Mr. Cohen's hand up. Is there a second? Thank you, Claudia Wilson Anderson.
If I can just, I, I would just change the language that you use slightly to say adopt this as an appendix to the utility element of our master.
Thank you. Uh, Carrie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Cappizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
He stepped away.
Uh, Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That's good. That feels good to have done that. Uh, it really did take a lot of work. Thank you so much, Jim, um, for, you know, quarterbacking this. It was um, it really is the product of a
I was the half.
Kinda work over a really long time.
Quarterback, I was the halfback.
What, what does that make Andrew?
Back, I don't know. You passed the ball to me.
Like the only position I know. Um, on that particular playing field. Um, all right, next up, we have the Municipal Capital Project Review. Um, Deanna? Welcome, really, uh, interested to hear what you and see, uh, these projects.
Hey, well, thank you, everyone. Good evening. I'm Deanna Stockton, Municipal Engineer and Deputy Administrator. Uh, I'm going to share a PowerPoint presentation with you. Um, which provides an overview of, um, the exciting capital improvement program in my department. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, David. Now, if I can change the slides. Okay, here we go. Okay, um, just for background, so in case people aren't aware, um, we have, um, a department now named Infrastructure and Operations within that organization. Um, we have engineering, public works, as well as fleet maintenance and the sewer department. And you'll see the layers then that fall in under each of those groups. Um, so we have quite a large capital improvement program that we manage. Um, first, I'll start with the sewer capital projects. We have a number of projects going on right now in Princeton. The inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer system accounts for sixty percent of our sewer flow to the treatment plant. Um, and so allowing that I and I, as we call it, to continue, it's the antithesis of sustainability. Um, so all of these projects that are proposed as part of the capital budget is, um, to stave off the impacts of that I and I infiltration into the system. Whether it's impacts to our ability to serve Princeton or if it's the impact that it has at the Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority. Um, so we, for this next year, for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, we have this list of projects. Hamilton Avenue Sewer. Hamilton Avenue Sewer, um, located in the middle of town is a project where we are taking multiple or parallel lines of sanitary sewer and, um, sewer mains that are also in easements in people's yards and, um, collecting that into one new main sanitary sewer to serve that area. Um, Mini System 36 and 36A is a large, um, I N I project that serves over 800 homes and that should be kicking off early next spring.
Quick question, Deanna?
Yep.
About the I N I, you gave the 60% figure, which is really sort of eye popping. When you think about, you know, how much wear and tear that represents, um, on equipment and, you know, it's all filled with sediment and blah, blah, blah. I mean, I assume, is that 60% of what's going, uh, through our sanitary sewer pipes? Is that an average? Is it, is it like 80% dirt in a heavy rain and 30% the rest of the time? Or, or do you have a handle on that?
Yeah, that's definitely an average, um, because it also accounts for the variability of if we're in drought conditions, that type of thing. So yeah, it's a large amount. And if you consider that's clean water that you don't need to be treating, you know, using the resources of energy to treat or to pump, um, where in some cases. So I'm sorry, I can't see anybody. The way my screen is set up, so please just interrupt me if you do have questions.
I'll let you know if people raise their hands. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and so in addition to the mini system projects, we, um, also have a project to look at the condition of the sewer trunk line, which runs along, uh, Lake Carnegie. And, um, you know, there's two trunk lines we're looking at. Line B, which is shown in the orange, that is 90 years old. Um, and it's about 3.2 miles that we're looking at. We're doing, um, inspection now. And that will help us prepare a plan for rehabil- rehabilitation or replacement. Um, also in the same area is trunk line C, which is shown more in the purple, blue color. Uh, another, that section is 60 years old and just over half a mile. And, and in this case, we've been able to work with the university through their voluntary contribution because a majority of that trunk line C, um, is carrying university flows. So we are working in conjunction with them on that project. Uh, additionally, in this capital program, uh, we are proposing currently to replace six out of nine pump stations. Uh, in 2025, that number will go up to eight out of nine because we will be, uh, getting a proposal for two more pump stations. Uh, many of the pump stations are located in low-lying flood-prone areas. So the project includes elevating above the 500-year uh, floodplain. It also is building in redundancy of pumps and power supplies because oftentimes not only is the pump station flooded, but the roads for our um, staff to get to those pump stations are flooded. So, uh, that is a very important resiliency and sustainability project. Uh, we're also looking at, we have a project right now to map, um, the floodplain related to where our sanitary sewer manholes are located and, um, come up with a plan to make those manholes watertight in case of flooding. Um, so moving on into parks and open space projects, um, rather than the dirty, the dirty water talk, we can talk about nice green projects. So, uh, four projects right now in the works with our department. Micro Forest at Quarry Park. This is a, it's a resiliency project, but it's also a stormwater project. And this is where we're taking a part of Quarry Park. We're removing invasive species and, um, replanting it with understory and canopy um, vegetation at a much denser rate so that it becomes a self-sustaining forest in a very short amount of time, within about three years. Um, also on tap for us is a restoration project in Community Park North. We had a large blowdown, I think about 10 years ago in Community Park. We now have a half a million dollar grant to come in, do some invasive species removal and again, do some understory and canopy plantings. Um, also from a historic standpoint, we have a project in the Mountain Lakes Preserve, which was related to when it was a functioning ice, um, producing site. There is a stone arch bridge that requires replacement or rehabilitation. So that project will be moving ahead next year, as well as another footbridge within the lake, uh, within the park will be replaced. And lastly is the Community Park South Rehabilitation. Um, this was the subject of steering committee meetings and community meetings. I know Freddie was there with us through that discussion. Um, a concept plan was created. It still requires some tweaks, which is something that the next consultant will be tasked with first. Um, but essentially, we are looking to create three construction contracts that can be built sequentially, um, to complete the improvements at Community Park South. So on the screen, I've just, I have a little example of what the Quarry Park, uh, micro forest will look like, as well as Community Park South. Um, moving on, next, um, while it's buried into the middle of the presentation, this is really the, uh, the bread and butter of what our department does. Um, Jim and I, you know, lead the, the path forward on all of the roadway design. So with our projects, um, that we work on, we follow the master plan, um, which identifies personal mobility at the top. Uh, whereas personal cars, single occupancy vehicles are at the bottom of prioritization. We also look at complete streets design principles, um, the safe systems approach, as well as Vision Zero and, um, where we have racial and social equity, um, you know, prioritizing those areas that, um, that maybe don't make the noise, but they warrant the equal treatment that, uh, the rest of the community does. And then with that, also the green infrastructure, resiliency and sustainability. So with that, um, the bicycle pedestrian mobility projects that we are working on at this time include the Nassau Streetscape improvements. And on the screen, you'll see, um, an image from our most recent presentation at council. Uh, we'll be updating the pedestrian space on the north side of Route 27 between Chambers Street to Moore Street. There are also, um, traffic calming pedestrian improvements at intersections, um, for the crosswalks. So at the Thomas Sweet Crosswalk, that will be, include a raised crosswalk across the street with, uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Uh, we are also proposing to shift the crosswalk at Tulane Street, South Tulane, to make that safer as you go across Nassau Street. And we're also, uh, doing some improvements in, in front of Palmer Square with the intersections. Um, moving on, we have rectangular rapid flashing beacons that will be installed on Route 206 at Mans Grove Road and Harrington Road. These are both currently, um, intersections with crosswalks, but we are moving to add these R R F Bs to make those safer. Um, another project in the works to be built next year is the Cherry Hill Side Path. We received a D O T grant of approximately a million dollars to extend the pathway from Foulay Drive, where it currently ends up to Crestview. And once you're at Crestview, you do get the opportunity to move through the neighborhood streets to connect all the way up to Balfour at this point. Um, so this is a, a great improvement to really connect some residential areas into the center of town. Um, also in coordination, um, with a grant that we've received on Turhune Road, we are finally completing the sidewalk system. So between Harrison Street and Mount Lucas, we will be extending sidewalks on both sides of the road. And we are looking at cross crossings and, uh, safety improvements we can make there. Uh, lastly, one of the, the advantages we had with P S E N G ripping up 10 miles, 12 miles of roads in Princeton, we had the opportunity to, um, add in some of the bicycle infrastructure that is in the bicycle master plan. And so on Hodge Road, we were able to add a bike lane. And on Valley Road, when it is repaved this spring, uh, we will be putting in bicycle lanes, one in each direction. Um, so on, in terms of multimodal projects, where it's just not bicycle or pedestrian focused, uh, we are working on the Hamilton Wiggins Paul Robeson Corridor improvements. Uh, upon completion of the sanitary sewer project on Hamilton, we will be coming in with an engineering project. Um, and based upon the work that the consultant will, will do, uh, we're looking at whether we will be including bicycle lanes or, uh, a shared use path in that corridor from Moore Street to Linden Lane. Um, and within tho- those improved, improvement areas, there will also be a traffic signal at um, Walnut Lane and a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at Moore Street and a raised intersection at Linden Lane. So it's, it's definitely a multimodal project where we're trying to slow traffic, um, incorporate bike facilities and, um, just improve the corridor in general. Harrison Street Corridor is an, is a project that we are in the process of completing a study of the corridor to see what type of multimodal improvements can be made. Uh, but we have submitted a grant application to at least start making improvements from Nassau Street to Franklin Avenue. Um, and you'll see later on in the presentation, but that Harrison Street Corridor study will be presented to council on November 12th. So the public will be able to see, um, what some of the proposed recommendations are. Uh, another project is improvements to Alexander University and Dickinson. These again are, um, it's, it's a roadway resurfacing project with improvements to sidewalk. Uh, but we will also be adding sharrows and, um, making changes to the intersection of College Road and, um, University Place for, for traffic calming. Two more on this list are Mount Lucas Road, which will include the extension of the shared use path that we had built a few years back. Um, so we'll be replacing the existing four to five foot wide, uh, paved or concrete sidewalk that exists with an eight foot wide shared use path, um, as well as making improvements to the road, um, as well. And then the last project on this list is Turhune Road. This is North Harrison Street to Grover. This is a complementary project to what was approved with the WIN application for the alleys. Uh, the municipality will be building, uh, the north side of the road, which includes the sidewalk and the bike lane, as well as the completion of the raised intersection with New Road and, um, than a circle. Um, so this is just an, an overview showing all of the areas where these various projects are located in town. Um, next, we have multi-mobility planning projects going on as well. David, do you have a question?
Yeah, yeah. Maybe you'll talk about this, but I just wanted to ask, I know that there's a major project for Washington Road as well that the university had proposed. I don't 100% know what the relationship is between, you know, the municipality and the university. Are they just going to do all the work themselves? Or is that also sort of like the sewer project, a joint effort?
Right. Um, Washington Road is all being done by the university. We, we, um, we are starting to have some conversations about some traffic signal projects that may be coming in the future. Uh, but the current bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure that they're building, that is, that's all their initiative.
Okay. And Deanna, that, that project for, uh, it will include some elements that require them to come in front of the planning board.
Yes. Yep. Okay, um, moving on, mobility planning projects, uh, we have kicked off a transit study. Um, we have about five to 10 different services that provide mobility, um, services to our municipality. And we have brought in a consultant to review all of those, uh, services to can, to make sure that we are providing it in the most effective way while, uh, capturing the most potential riders. So that project will, I think, will be coming out more publicly, um, after the first of the year to gather feedback from the public. Um, one of the other projects that's been a little bit slower for us to work on, um, but it is still a council goal and priority this year, and that is a complete and green streets policy for all. I'm sure you're all aware, we have a complete streets policy. The state came out with a model, um, green and complete streets policy a few years back. And I understand D O T is going to be adopting a complete and green street policy very, very soon. So, uh, that is one of our goals is also to update our complete streets policy to in, include, uh, green streets. And, let's see here, uh, stormwater and resiliency projects. We have, uh, we're in the design phase for the replacement of six culverts. We also have a project, um, to do bank stabilization of the Stony Brook along Short Quaker. We are also investigating, um, new types of roadway safety gates that we can upgrade on Quaker Road and put in a new installation on Mercer Road. We would like to partner with, um, Mercer County on Rosedale Road and Mercer and Somerset Counties on River Road, uh, to see roadway safety gates installed in those locations as well. But that, that's been a slower process, but it's definitely something that is being considered.
And if I can clarify that the safety gates are for flood protection.
Yes. So like you see this.
To keep motorists from driving into floods.
Yes.
Correct. So, so like in this picture where you see this gate, this yellow gate that's hanging on by, uh, not very much soil, that is a roadway safety gate. that's hanging on by uh not very much soil, that is a roadway safety gate. Um, also, we've been working on a stormwater utility feasibility study, as was mentioned. We are in phase two. We uh, had a council presentation on it on Monday night. We also will have a um our first public meeting on October thirtieth, so we do uh ask that people share that information and please come and join us. Uh, we are also in the midst of a tree canopy assessment study, which will then lead into um an update of the community forestry management plan. So there's, we've got a lot of different things going on. Uh, not to forget our facilities, um, and if everybody has a long memory, um, I think the Public Works has been in the master plan since the late nineteen nineties um for being in need of a new facility. Twenty twenty-four, we still need a new facility for Public Works, uh, but we are making traction and uh, looking to move into a concept design phase for a new Public Works facility out on River Road. Uh, we are adding in safety fencing on the top deck of the parking garage at Spring Street. Um, we have been looking closely at what the trends are related to safety of parking garages. We saw it with the university in the stadium garage where they provided safety fence on the top level. Um, and so we are following suit and will be installing safety fencing on our top level. And um, then we're, we've also been working on a concept plan to refresh Heinz Plaza. It's been about twenty years since Heinz Plaza was built. And so that um, I will have a concept plan that is going to be shared with council at the next meeting, which is October twenty eighth. So everybody is invited to attend um these meetings on the twenty eighth. At council, we'll be talking about the Nassau Streetscape as well as Heinz Plaza. On October thirtieth, we have a stormwater utility pub- public information center starting at six PM and then on November twelfth at council, again, we'll be discussing the Harrison Street Corridor improvements. And I think that's it. So now I can see you all. Do you have any questions?
That is so much. I mean, dang, you y'all are working on a lot. Um, and I uh, I have a a few things that I wanted to ask about um uh, other members of the board who have questions, please start raising your hand. Um, first, I wanted to say I'm really excited about the microforest. That's a uh, those are um really, really remarkable little um very robust ecosystems, and I'll be really interested to see how how we do with that. Um, I wanted to know on the the various traffic calming things that you described, um, and I might have missed this, but are are there any plans for additional stop signs? Um, either anywhere along Wiggins or um like Jefferson and Mount Lucas where there's two two, there are two stops and it's an
Jefferson and Turhune or Jefferson and Valley, you mean?
No, not Jefferson and Valley, although I know that's a hotspot too.
The Red Hill, the Red Hill Road uh intersection.
Jefferson and Mount Lucas needs something.
Anyway, I don't wanna, I I'm just wondering whether, and I, there's so much on this. I don't mean to just be picking apart and talking about things that you didn't mention, but um, but I I am interested in the overall uh, um, whether you think that adding stop signs in a few key places is feasible as a traffic calming and just safety feature.
Um, the quick answer is no.
Okay.
Um, we um stop signs should not be used as traffic calming. They they are a traffic control device. Um,
Okay.
We, we have lots of people asking them for that reason, uh, but that's not their purpose. And we can, we can discuss that at another time, Louise, if you want to.
Yeah.
One of the things that we are doing though, um, if I may, is that we are looking at all of our intersections and trying to improve site distances. There's a lot of landscaping that has grown into our right of way. We've, we've, we, we are establishing a policy where we're asking property owners, please within this triangle at every intersection, please cut back your your vegetation, cut it so that it's low. Um, a lot of what you, what we experience at these intersections is the fact that you're at a stop sign, you still can't see the oncoming traffic, so you creep out into the intersection. We're trying to find all of those places and take care of it.
Or or you don't even stop until you're all the way in the crosswalk.
When you say you, Louise, who who do you mean?
I I try to be pretty careful about that.
The unidentified, yes, the unidentified evil drivers do that.
David's our boots on the ground. He could probably like name me.
Absolutely, and he's at a, at a tough intersection himself.
In terms of enforcement, um, what are your thoughts? E- even any fines? I know you know, living in Princeton, drive all the time, and it's a huge problem with the tri- site triangles.
Well, we do get compliance most of the time.
Will do you?
And you know, a lot of, uh, the difficulty is that every, every resident believe has has the feeling that this is my property. You know, and they'll plant a bush or they'll plant a tree, and then twenty years later, that is an obstruction. And legally, we can, it's in our right of way. We can come in and cut it down. But we try to be sensitive with everybody, all the residents, and and we talk to them about it. And uh, and when it's on their property, um, we could also do the same thing, Jerry, as you know. We can come in and cut it down because it's an obstruction to site distance, but we, we're, we're working at those most critical intersections that we have. And one of them is uh, um, Turhune and and Jefferson. Um, and I'm finally
Another accident yesterday.
Site distance problem.
Oh, boy. Big accident yesterday. Really, I, yeah.
I was just going to say, we work closely with police when there are those crashes. We are receiving the crash reports and we review them to see if there is something that we can immediately take action on. Um, or otherwise, we just keep a record of it um to see if trends are are presenting themselves over time to see what we can be doing. Um, but with that question about stop signs, sometimes uh, when you change traffic patterns, that has unintended consequences as well.
Yeah.
And we are cognizant of that. Um, so it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah, for sure.
Yep.
One, one other quick thing, um, are there um plans to install benches at um at bus stops that currently don't have them? I am thinking of one in particular that I just pass all the time on foot and people frequently wait there and there's no bench and it's right on Witherspoon just north of um Paul Robeson and Wiggins. I'm sure you know the spot.
We would, we wanna go a step further and put a um shelter there.
Great.
Yes, we just have to come up with um an appropriate design for that location.
It's a, it's, it's sort of tight, but it it really is a heavily used bus stop and I feel so bad for the people who are just sitting on that really low wall there next to the cemetery and
And you, and you probably noticed that the sidewalk itself goes around a large concrete pad. That is where we future bus shelter.
Yes.
And bench.
Good.
Yeah, and we need to stop people from sitting on that wall because it's a dry laid field stone wall, and when they sit on it, the stones get knocked out of place.
But if they're
Yeah, and I mean, I hate to tell people to stand up and, you know, because they've been, you know, just finished a work shift and are just trying to get home.
But if there are locations that you're aware of that are missing um an amenity like that, please let us know. That's also part of the transit study. Uh, we've done an inventory of all of our bus stop locations and that's something that the consultant will be looking at as well.
Okay.
It's also a recommendation of the master plan to have benches, shelters, trash cans, uh, which I think as you saw from Deanna's presentation, um, our engineering department is using that master plan and and you know, following up on all those goals in there and recommend.
Yeah, I appreciated the the um references at the bottom of the pages to the master plan. Thank you for that.
Good.
Um, when do you expect to finish the Phase Three Witherspoon? The northernmost section of the whis- huh?
Before Thanksgiving.
Oh, wow, fantastic.
That's, that's our hope. There's a little bit of legal room, then it may go into the beginning of December, but I'm being an optimist.
Good.
We had a little bit of today. So one of the big improvements on that project for pedestrians was um pedestrian level lighting.
Yeah.
That we never had in that corridor, or that was a big concern of the community uh when we did our design charrettes and unfortunately, that's also been one of the delaying components, waiting for PSENG to approve the plans and purchase equipment, which then takes, you know, twenty weeks to arrive.
Yeah, oh. Well, thanks for, thanks for slog- slogging away at it because it's already made a big difference in the you know, the other two phases and it'll be great to see.
Good.
Um, and now we do still have an application to get to. Are there other questions for Deanna? Uh, about the Capitol Project? Um, Justin?
Yes, I I don't have a question. Uh, and Deanna, tell me if I'm wrong here, but in that image of community park, uh, there were two different shades of green. It's not what you think. It's all gonna be grass as it is now. Uh, that's just to show that you can fit a full soccer field and two uh softball fields without outfield fences, that sort of thing. But it will be grass that grows out of the ground naturally.
Correct.
Good. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you again um very much, Deanna, for for that presentation. So much stuff going on and thank you to Jim for being here tonight. Um, you can stick around if you'd like, or you can go watch baseball.
I go walk my dog. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night, Jim.
Good job.
I did notice, by the way, that the Yankees pulled ahead. Um, so uh, hmm, so I'm sorry, I need to check quickly my, whether my yeah, my computer battery looks very low, but it's charging. Um, okay, next up, we have an application. Um, this is uh from Stephen Wascow. I hope I'm pronouncing the his name correctly. This was carried from September fifth, twenty twenty-four. It's a minor subdivision with variances and a lot line adjustment uh, at five three seven and five six one Stockton Street, block ninety-three oh one, lots eleven and twelve. File number P twenty-three twenty-three, three six eight MS and twenty-nine HP twenty twenty-four. Um,
Ma- Madam Chair, um, this was originally carried um on December five to uh tonight, um, but there has been
September, September five. Right?
I have, oh, September five, right, right, right. Um, but it has been renoticed and the notice is proper. The board has jurisdiction.
Okay, excellent. Yep, thank you.
Yep.
So I see we have Mr. Kennedy here on behalf of the applicant and also um, uh, Mr. Max Hayden um, and others. Uh, I will turn first to um Justin Lesko to sort of get us started and then we can swear in um, the applicant's uh expert witnesses. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You swear affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth.
Yes, I do.
That's one of our friend.
Thank you.
Is there any other municipal employees uh or consultants that will testify? I assume Dan and Derek.
And Elizabeth Kim as well, I believe.
Yeah, so why don't we swear all of the municipal folks in first? Hi, Elizabeth.
Hello.
And Derek, you too, if you're there.
And Dan.
Dan's uh, Dan's activated his camera and so has Elizabeth Kim.
Okay.
So let's go ahead.
Could all raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So it's one or front.
And Derek too. Derek, everybody was just sworn in. Do you uh?
Yes.
Um, did you hear the oath? Derek, or do we don't want, go ahead, Ju- uh, Jerry, do Derek.
Derek, do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yeah.
So it's one or front.
All right, thanks. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to share my screen. Uh, you're probably used to this by now, but I am going to share the publicly available.
Said I did. I must be some technical difficulties.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I did. I said I
Yeah, we, we
Gotcha.
It's fine.
Yep.
I do. Thank you.
Uh, there might be a little bit of a delay there.
It's, it seems like it, yeah.
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 Uh, so I'm sharing the publicly available NJ map from Rowan University. Jerry, if we want to make this an exhibit?
Yep, PB one.
Great. The subject parcels are in the center of your screen at block ninety-three oh one and lots eleven and twelve. Uh, and just, uh, you know, I'll give a brief introduction to orient us to the site. Um, it's somewhat of a summary of the first half of my report dated uh, October first, twenty twenty-four, but I'll save my uh, you know, more the substantial comments till the end or more content-based comments till the end. Um, because they're not really substantial. Uh, so anyway, back to the the location. Uh, the subject parcels are fronting Stockton Street, also known as Route two oh six, across from the end of Quaker Road, uh, right next to the Stony Brook, Stony Brook Bridge. Um, and the Stony Brook runs through Lot twelve, which has the address of five sixty-one Stockton Street and is owned by Mr. Wascow. Uh, Lot eleven uh is adjacent to the east of uh the other site and does not currently have access to the Stony Brook. Its address is five thirty-seven Stockton Street and it's owned by Mr. Bryant. Um, I will probably just refer to the lots by the applicant's names just to make it easier than, you know, east, west, uh, lot, lot eleven. Um, both of these parcels are in the R-two residential zone of the former township, as are the adjacent parcels on the north side of Stockton Street. Uh, those across the street are in the R-three zone of the former township. Mr. Wasco's property is point eight acres, which makes it non-conforming to the one point five acre minimum lot requirement of the zone. Uh, the home on the parcel dates back to the seventeen hundreds. Um, as I stated before, Ms. Kim is here tonight and will be providing a report from the Historic Preservation Commission's review of the application. I think that report is actually technically from uh Ms. Capizoli as well. Um, and as both parcels are in the locally designated Princeton Battlefield and Stony Brook Settlement Historic District, as well as on the state and national registers. Back to Mr. Wasco's property, uh, I'm certain you'll hear about the way the house has been flooded in recent years uh, from the applicant's presentation. The house is located in a flood hazard area. Uh, Mr. Wasco described that uh, the recent flooding in concept reviews for this project at the Historic Preservation Commission in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, um, including a uh, the damage and a pretty harrowing situation caused by uh Hurricane Ida in twenty twenty-one. Um, and that flooding really is the impetus for this application. Uh, moving on, uh, Mr. Bryant's property is one point five two acres, so it's just over the minimum lot requirement. Uh, there's a historic home on it dating back to the seventeen hundreds and it is accessed through a shared driveway with his neighbors to the east. Um, I'll let the applicant get into the details of the application, but just in brief, uh, this is a subdivision application to move the lot line between these two lots uh, so that Mr. Wasco Uh, so that Mr. Wasco can move his historic house away from the Stony Brook and away from probably imminent future harm with our changing climate uh and more intense rainfall and flooding as we've covered tonight. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed the application and approved the changes that would be made to the house, including a significant addition to it. Um, so while this is not a site plan review application per se, uh, the subdivision and the changes to the house are pretty intertwined. Um, and the applicant is asking for both permanent variances and tempor- uh temporary variances. Some of these are due to additional right-of-way that would be dedicated to Mercer County along Route two oh six, uh, which would put both lots under the minimum lot size requirement. Uh, additional variances are then required for the front yard setback on the existing building on Mr. Bryant's property, um, as well as height to setback ratio for the buildings on both lots. Um, I should note that Mr. Bryant is not proposing any changes to his home. Uh, but with the right-of-way dedication, the lot line is essentially moving closer to his home, uh, if this were approved. Um, there are also variance requests from the neighborhood residential zoning standards, AKA neighborhood character, uh, for the width of the garage on Mr. Wasco's proposed additions to his home, uh, as well as a variance to allow the existing garage on his property to be in the front yard of the parcel. Um, in that case, the garage is not moving to the front yard, but the house is moving further back. Uh, therefore, the garage becomes in the front yard. And as I stated before, there are also temporary variances requested for Mr. Wasco's existing home for the time between when the property is subdivided and when the house is moved, if the subdivision were to be approved by the board. Um, so Madam Chair, that's all I have for my introduction. Um, I do have some comments in my report uh that I'll save until after the applicant's presentation, including uh master plan analysis. Um, Ms. Kim is here with the HPC report and Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weissman are here with their engineering and zoning report. Thank you.
And just to follow up on what um Justin said, at the staff level, what we've tried to do is set this process up so that as much relief as can be granted at this point, if the board so choose, should be granted um rather than having a bifurcated process where Mr. Wasco has to come back uh later on and seek most of the variance, et cetera, relief. And we thought it was and and HPC relief in in fact, because the idea was originally HPC was going to review it later on. But then um we asked if they could review it now. They did it and you're gonna hear from Emily Kim in a few minutes or Julie. Um, but that's the way we set it up because we wanted to facilitate this process as much as we could. Because this is, at least from the staff point of view, clearly for the benefit of the community. And who knows how long it's going to be before that that house floats away. Um, so we wanted to get that done as soon as possible.
Um, thank you for that, Jerry. Um, do we want to hear from um Elizabeth Kim? Uh, eh, to hit on the highlights of the um Historic Preservation Commission memo since folks didn't get it until sort of last minute or do you?
I'd like to hear the applicant's
Okay.
Presentation first, I think.
Okay.
The historic report will make more sense after we've seen the
Yeah.
All right. All right, that that makes sense to me too, too. Thank you. Um, so Mr. Kennedy? Welcome.
Thank you, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee uh for the applicant Steven Waskow here tonight. Um, as you heard from your planning director, um, this is technically a minor subdivision, but we are here to adjust the lot lines so that an historic home that was horrifically flooded and you'll see the photos unfortunately, for reasons again, as as Mr. Lesko said, we were reviewing here tonight that we're all working towards creating some additional capacity and resiliency on a regional basis, but ultimately when that doesn't happen, you have things like what we saw here on Hurricane Ida. Um, and Mr. Wasco's been working um with HPC as 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 you heard, there were several concept reviews and we were there for approval um a- and ultimately with a plan to relocate a very special kind of historic home on the same lot, but back out away uh from the base flood elevation. Uh, you'll you'll see also that there's a sewer easement, so you you had to actually go a little higher than uh maybe the minimum necessary to get to the right correct side of a municipal sewer easement. But ultimately, um, I think everyone that's looked at this has agreed and we very much appreciate the input from historic uh that this is the best way to respect the history of this home and allow it to continue to exist and to be uh used and and respected and um by a a good, very patient steward uh like the applicant here tonight and his neighbor um who's uh allowing for the reconfiguration of the property, so there's room to move this out of the the next knock on wood uh floods path. A- as you heard, there are several variances. They are all essentially a function of the uh right-of-way taking. Uh, it's about thirty-three feet that's being acquired um for future use on two oh six. Uh, so while one of the home, the the neighboring home is not moving at all and this home is being moved back further from the road, we need new variances for height to setback and uh lot uh frontage or excuse me, uh, front yard setback. Again, even though we're moving further back or one home isn't moving at all, it's just a function of the the right-of-way expansion. Now, there is one variance and and much appreciated with staff um and HPC and kind of corralling this because there is a uh, I'll say an interesting quirk in neighborhood character uh with side uh accessible garages that comes into play here and we'll talk about that at at some length. Uh, we're not quite sure that this was the problem that was meant to be solved with this portion of neighborhood character. Uh, we appreciate HPC's kind of endorsement of the plan that we proposed. Uh, ultimately, the way the garage was done is more hidden and less visible than a compliant garage would be under neighborhood character. Uh, so we we hope you agree, you know, the the other variances are your classic hardship uh created by the flood uh and the right-of-way requirement. This one, uh, the neighborhood character one is a little bit more appropriate as a C two and we hope you'll agree when we go through the elements uh why that is. We've got three
Brian, is is that for um Mr. Wasco's lot or for Mr. Bryant's lot?
Um, for Mr. Wasco's lot would be the the one C two uh variance uh for the the neighborhood character design of the new garage addition.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so with that, um, we've got three witnesses and I know uh a lot of people's eyes are perhaps on a on a on a scoreboard, uh, so we'll do our best to be quick here this evening.
You have our full attention.
Well, I can tell you as a, I will not reveal my baseball allegiance, but it's not one that's gonna make anyone looking at the scoreboard uh uh feel any better for me. But having said that, we have our um first, our applicant, uh, Steve Wasco to to talk about, you know, the reason for this, what he's been through to kind of get to this point uh and the the flood essentially uh that brought us here. Uh, we've got uh from our engineering team, Ted Pivonik, our our surveyor, and then Max Hayden, uh, our historic architect who will go through the revised plans um and is uh a a bit of an expert in relocating these type of historic structures uh as as uh one of the few people who've done that quite a few times here in in New Jersey. So with those three people, if if uh, Mr. Mull, if it's possible to swear those three folks in, I would have you to do that.
If you could, uh, each raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do, yes, I do.
Okay, if you could, uh, each state your full name and spell your last name.
Steven Wasco, W A S K O W.
Thank you.
Ted Pivovarnik, D I V O V A R N I C K.
Max Hayden, H A Y D E N.
Thank you.
Thank you much, Steve. Before we go through our exhibits, so you could introduce yourself, um, and you'll just briefly go through, you know, your connection to to Princeton and this property and, you know, we'll we'll have the photos to to show it, but uh you know, what you've what you've done to kind of get to this point.
Sure. Uh, bought the house thirty-one years ago. It was a graduate student dormitory with six people living in a two-bedroom, one-bath house. It was falling into the ground and uh really love the house, been here for a long time. And subsequently over over that time, I've endured three floods, uh Floyd in ninety-eight, uh Irene in uh two thousand and eleven and then Ida uh twenty twenty-one, each getting successively higher and higher and higher. And uh and realized it's gonna be so hard to move it with all the moving pieces, but I love the house. I looked into every other possibility of getting out of the house, blue acres and other things, but I like Princeton. I work here, live here, yeah, and as my community and this is undertook this project, not just to move the house and the reason I'm asking for all this uh the addition and everything else is economically with all this work, it didn't make sense to move a two-bedroom house. So I really was trying to do something that I could live, build a house that I, you know, would still have equity in at some point when I have to leave at some point in my life and that's why the project is what I'm trying to make it to be. Uh, I know everybody wants to get out of here quick. I'm gonna turn it right back to Ryan, so.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Steve. If we if we start, we'll have one exhibit um this evening. It's twenty-five uh slides. Um, if it's okay to mark that uh for me to share my screen and mark that as our one exhibit this evening?
Yes, it's a one.
One second here, my uh I have way too many windows open. So uh, see, we'll start uh just kind of orienting the board. Uh, this is a tax map of Princeton here and that blue arrow points to you are in your neighbor's lot.
Yes.
And that kind of thick black line to the left, while it's kind of a zone boundary, that's where the Stony Brook is.
Correct.
Then zooming in a little bit further, uh, this time with the historic uh map for for Princeton, this shows the historic district that you're in. Um, and then again, pointing to your lot, I believe on the left and and your neighbor's lot kind of uh where my cursor is.
Correct.
And uh, zooming in a little bit further, uh, these are the two lots in question here uh outlined in in blue. Yeah, yours being on the left and uh uh your your neighbor's on the right. Getting a little closer now, um here we have uh five thirty-seven, that's your neighbor's house to the right. That's the one that's not moving at all, just kind of staying put, right?
Correct.
And then uh here, I want to explain a little bit about uh what we're looking at here, but this is your house here at uh five sixty-one.
Correct, that's my house right next, right next to the stream, right next to the water, right next to the uh bridge they rebuilt, you know, eight years ago and uh uh, yes, and uh we'll see it underwater in a few few slides.
Alright, so here's some some photos in the before times, uh, I guess one, maybe winter and and one, it tells us a little bit of particularly about the one on the right, because that's this was intriguing to me.
Well, two weeks, but two weeks before Ida, we had a rain event that nobody remembers, but the water was all the way, everything in the foreground and to the right of the bar- the yellow barrier was flooded two weeks prior to Ida and then I the remnants of Ida came through. In those two weeks, subsequent weeks, I ordered this water fillable barrier, uh sixty-foot barrier that up until eleven o'clock that night was keeping the water at bay and then it crested a that barrier at about uh about midnight and one thirty in the morning, it was uh uh, see the French doors, it was forty-four inches on the back, on the back deck of the house there. So uh, that obviously you'll see in the next, the next slide that that barrier floated away like everything else did.
So next now, slide seven, we're starting to look at some of the things on the the night of and the immediate aftermath of of Ida.
Correct. That's the water coming up on the left and that's the water on in the garage receding uh in the morning.
Slide eight.
That's about, that left is about peak at about uh one o'clock in the morning, with thirty-three inches in the garage and and uh four feet through the kitchen and living room and seven feet in my television room.
And just for orientation purpose, on the left here, this is kind of standing on the high side, maybe the the this creek, the Stony Brook is actually behind your home.
Behind the home, that, correct. And the picture on the right is looking, people know the one-lane road, that's not snow, that's the water cresting over the parapet on Quaker Road where it comes out the two oh six. And that's uh my house at full flood on the left and the missing wall is in five o'clock in the morning when I walk down the bridge as the waters are receding from my uh television room with a wall missing.
And I guess on the left here, this is probably the front of your car, you know, in your driveway area, kind of looking down as there's the property slopes towards the stream.
Exactly. This is the more, this is the morning after, this is, you know, sun's coming up, waters are still flowing on Stony Brook and uh and that's the uh, the water receding and at its peak, that deck off the back, the water was thirty-three, forty, forty-three inches over that deck.
That's maybe closer to uh, you know, on the top of your grill here, perhaps halfway up the
Yep, exactly.
And Mr. Wasco, the the deck is at grade?
Uh, it's elevated, it's about thirty inches, the uh about thirty inches off the ground, backyard slopes off, yes.
Okay.
There's another, there's, I think there's a picture after, the the picture you saw of the yellow barrier, you saw the deck elevated.
Okay.
It was a up a hill and then elevated.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's the aftermath in the morning.
And and I know we started with a picture of this yellow blood barrier. Is that what we're looking at here, deflated and kind of
That's deflated. And the and the lower right, the lower right-hand corner, you see the uh the blue, uh, the blue area, that's my missing wall that floated around the house. And that's three, that's a three-window historical window set that's sitting in my front yard that came off the other side of the house as the water swirled around the house. And that's uh the water coming down backyard.
And looking here in the backyard here, this is the kind of corner porch and then looking towards the the Stony Brook again.
Correct. This is the block French doors and all my front, my belongings and the upper left-hand corner is my kitchen table and you can see the water line on my on my computer o- over the kitchen table. And uh, and on the right is my missing wall and uh they built them well, didn't, the the roof didn't collapse that night. It's amazing.
Well, um, before we go on to the technical details of what we're moving where and and uh and the variances and the subdivision plans, certainly um happy to have uh the applicant uh answer any, any questions about uh the the where and whys of this um, but
I think we, I think we get the where and the why.
Understood.
I mean, I I don't mean to be dismissive, I mean, that, believe me, it's very compelling. It's completely clear that this house needs to be moved.
Well, with that, um, Ted, if you want to unmute yourself and I'll I'll give us, uh, I know you've been before this board uh quite a few times, but uh, you know, a brief um reminder of your credentials and I'll have you uh except hopefully accepted as an expert again here tonight.
Sure. Uh, my name is Ted Pivonik. I'm the Director of Surveying at Roberts Engineering. I've held that position since January of twenty sixteen. Um, prior to that, I was a principal and partner at Princeton Junction Engineering, uh, where I worked since nineteen eighty-three. Um, I've been a professional surveyor in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-one, so since that time, I've made my love, living, doing uh property surveys, boundary surveys, uh, doing surveys for minor, major subdivision plans, um, as well as doing uh base map surveying for um uh civil engineering design plans. Um, I regularly represent my clients in front of uh local zoning and planning boards, including this board uh in the past. I don't think it's been recent, it's been a few years. And uh I am familiar with the property. I've been out there. Um, and I uh, the plan has been prepared under my supervision.
Thank you. We we accept your qualifications.
Alright, thank you so much. Um, so so Ted, uh, maybe just started the introduction, what you were tasked with and you know, what type of things had to go into getting a plan here that that could even be presented to the to the board, because while it looks simple, I know a lot of work went into uh mapping some of these constraints, finding the flood elevations and and figure out how to how to make this work, including some uh, I'm sure frustrating trips to the state to find out how much of this uh road that they really wanted to take here.
Well, that's that's right. We had a, we we had a difficult time. The 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 survey actually wasn't, the the boundary survey actually wasn't that hard. It was the topographical survey of the site uh because of the site conditions, um, getting the flood elevations and finally determining what the actual right-of-way dedication is going to be from the state. Um, I I do want to point out, there's three main components. Um, I, I do want to point out, there's three main components. To why we drew the green line the way we did. Um, number one is, we needed to get this house out of the flood plain, out of the flood elevation. Um, without getting too close to the existing house that is to remain, which is that green box on the right hand side. And and we wanted to, to, and we also had to get it across the sanitary sewer easement that really cuts right through the middle of the lot. Uh, there's two other components. One, one of the criteria was the, the owner to the lot, uh, eleven. Wanted to have access to the Stony Brook, so we needed to give him a, a way to get down to the Stony Brook. And the third component was, we needed to do a, a almost equal land swap. So before the right of way dedication, we uh. We calculated the areas of both lots, and when we swapped the lands, we made an almost square foot for square foot. Swap of the two lots. Now, that doesn't reflect in the zoning chart, because the zoning chart. Actually includes the right of way dedications, but at the top of my minor subdivision plan, you'll see a chart. That says proposed lot areas pre thirty three right of way dedication. Um, that shows you that the land swap was almost equal uh before the right of way dedication.
So Ted, maybe just to orient the board here, looking at the two existing lots, this red dash line represents the. Current existing lot lines, twelve on the left, eleven to the right.
That's, that's correct.
And uh, in yellow, that is uh what will soon become part of two oh six in the state's hands, that's the right of way. How many is worth taking? They didn't really ask us uh, a dedication that they are requiring um in yellow.
That's correct, it's thirty three feet from the center line of the road.
And so then on kind of left to right, this is Stony Brook to the left, and what we've shaded in blue. That actually goes to the uh, I guess the, the wetlands lines that were mapped as part of this project, is that?
That's right, we had, excuse, we had an environmental consultant go out and flag the wetlands, they were classified as state open waters. So they don't have a uh, a transition area buffer adjacent to them. Uh, the blue. Is all the way out to the wetlands, the water is actually, the actual water level is a little bit farther to the left of that.
Then kind of moving from the left to the right. This red here, that's the existing location of this store home that we're gonna move, right?
That's correct.
Uh, then you've got uh, tried to shade in here. This is the absolute bare minimum flood hazard elevation, uh, or at least line.
That, that's correct, that is the FEMA one hundred year flood line, it's elevation seventy seven.
So everything that would ever happen on this site needs to be well above that, including any kind of stormwater features?
Uh, well, well, that's right, uh, there's actually a um. Uh, the, the engineer pointed out that there is a local flood hazard area elevation, which is approximately eighty one points. Eighty one point six. So and that, that runs uh, a kind of cross the driveway. Um, so we needed to get the existing, that the house moved beyond that elevation, so we set the house. All the way to the right hand side and then raised it up. Uh, it's a, it's about four feet above that eighty one point six, it's about elevation eighty five. So we're well above that.
So red on the left is the existing location. Red on the right is that ha, is the historic house moved back both away from the road and away from the stream. Blue behind it is the addition that's proposed, is that correct?
That's correct.
Green here, that's the existing garage that's going to just stay a- as is.
That's correct.
Alright, and then uh gray here is the uh driveway that's proposed. Um, and to the left between the driveway and the. State flood hazard line is our, some proposed uh, green uh stormwater infrastructure, correct?
That's right, there's actually two components to the stormwater, there. Because this requires a D E P um. Individual permit, a flood hazard permit. Uh, because of this disturbance in the repairian zone, the repairian zone is, is three hundred feet from the top of the bank, so almost. Completely both lots are in the repairian zone. And because we're doing disturbance in that, we need an individual permit. Part of that requirement is, is the D E P required us to have a. Total suspended solids, a T S S removal rate of ninety five percent or better. So we couldn't do that alone with a rain garden, so we had to combine two separate B M Ts, one is the. The um pervious paving in the driveway. Uh, that will have an underdrain that goes into the rain garden. Uh, pervious paving gives you approximately. Pervious paving gives you eighty percent T S S. And the bio retention basin, the rain garden gives you ninety percent. Well, when you combine them in series, you get up to about a ninety eight percent T S S removal. So that's, that's why they're combined in series, so we can meet that, that um. Requirement of the, of the individual permit with the D E P.
And, and Ted, um, I, I'm, I'm not, it's, it's hard for me to see everyone here, but I do believe uh, I see a, a councilman Cohen's hand raised.
Yeah, Mr. Cohen's hand is up, David.
Yeah, I just wanted to, and and I may have zoned out for many, you may have already addressed this, but I know that we. Adopted new. Uh, floodplain regulations in Princeton last year, or maybe even earlier this year. Where uh, you know, we. Had a more stringent requirement than we used to have before, and I know this project started well before that. So I'm sure you've been in dialogue with our staff, but I just wanted to. Uh, confirm that the placement, you know, that the placement of the new house. Or the new location for the house uh is compliant with those latest local regulations on.
Yes, we're, we're up out of that, that flood hazard area. And um, as far as the stormwater is concerned, I know we, we have that correct as well, the volume for the stormwater.
So yes, on the new, on the new rules, uh.
Yes, yeah.
A hundred percent, um.
Are you having to remove any trees to, to build the basin? Or maybe, I, is it a rain garden? I'm sorry, if I, bio retention?
It's, it's a rain garden, and there, there's are a couple trees right in that area, but they are dead. So, so we weren't, we weren't concerned with that area, it's not, there's no specimen trees in that, in that area.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll look to our, our next slide, this is the more detailed version of the uh. Of the plan and and shaded though here in, in yellow, we want to show that separately. That's the municipality's sewer easements for the lots behind. So uh, not that there was any doubt that the applicant wanted to go as high as possible, you know, for flood purposes. But we also had to be uh, on the high side of that sewer easement, because it could not be built upon as well.
Well, that's right, let me just point out uh one thing, we, when we went out to do our survey, we actually located that line, we located the manholes. And we compared the manholes to what is shown on the tax maps for, for Princeton. And we found that the, the sewer, the, the actual sewer line was not in the easement. So what we propose to do is um, prepare new deeds for this easement crossing this property. That centers the actual line, the actual manholes and sanitary sewer line, right in the center of the new sanitary sewer easement.
You've been working with the towns professionals on, on, on how to get that information, so we can uh kind of help fix that uh when we're done, right?
Yes.
Um, before we get to our zoning table, is there anything Ted, you'd like me to zoom in on or or kind of uh highlight as part of the? The new part of the plan, I know with the driveway, you, you did mention that's going to be a good amount of pervious pavement. Um, uh, and, and as well as some portions of the existing pavement will be removed as part of the project, uh, anything kind of beyond that?
Uh, no, no, that's it, the darker shading up near the road right there is where your cursor is, that's pavement to be removed. Um, and then the lighter shading in the back going into the garage, that's the, that's the pervious paving system. The other shading on the lots in the top left and bottom right, they are steep slopes, twenty five percent or greater, that's, that's a requirement to show in the plan.
So uh, finally, I think our last slide for you, Ted, on slide seventeen. Got that kind of reminder graphic to show where things were and are being moved, the lot lines are changing and a kind of a summary of. The variances that are a result largely of, you know, moving this house further back and this, the right of way. Dedication or taking, as I'll say, so we want to just quickly go through what those requirements are, and and I'll, I'll just note in advance. That uh, Ted's team's been working with the town staff over the last couple weeks about remeasuring one of the. Existing kind of height to setback ratio uh situations and and ultimately came out with a, a better. Let's say better, and both that it's more accurate and a less non-conforming condition after all, after, after revisiting that with them. So with that, Ted, maybe we just go through the, the highlights of what variances we need for the, for the two lots.
Uh, Brian, before that, could I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
You, one of the ideas here was that Mr. Brian had access to Stony Brook, but there, there's, at least according to this map, um. The slopes are twenty five percent or greater, and how does he get there? How do they?
How does he, how does he get down to the Stony Brook?
Yeah, when the slopes are twenty five percent or greater.
No, it's, it's, there's a natural walking path that's been there from before I, before I even, when Dr. Craig used to own. Uh, Mr. Bryant's property thirty some years ago, there's a little natural cut there and it's just. It's, you can just walk down right to the stream there, so it's uh, it, it's lovely down there, I used to, yeah, I used to fish it down there all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and just real quickly, since Mr. Kennedy, you've referred a couple of times to D O T taking that property, I assume D O T is compensating. The landowners for the right of way that it's claiming, is that correct?
Oh, that is, that is not the practice of the state or the county when those, when those.
Really, they don't, they, when they, when they take right of way, they straight up take it, they don't compensate.
When it's part of an application, uh. Uh, unfortunately, yes, that's what, including, you know, uh, it's not as common in Princeton, but when those takings happen in uh. Uh, for applications, um, for things on master plans, for example, even in municipalities. As part of an application, no, if they were to come by and uh, need it for a project affirmatively. We'd be talking about compensation.
Okay, that's inter, that's, I did not know that, it's good to know, thank you.
Okay, I, I'll go through the chart uh pretty quickly. Um, the lot twelve. Uh, which is the left side of the red line, al- already requires a, a lot area variance. And like I said previously, is what, when we, when we did this land swap. We tried to do an actual foot for foot swap, so. The lot areas prior to the dedication were almost exactly the same. But once you take that, those right of way dedications, and you could see that the dedication in front of lot twelve point oh one, the green line. On the left is much larger than the one on the right, so that's, that's. Part of the reason some of these, the, these lots need these lot area variances. Now, eleven point oh one, which is the lot on the right hand side, uh, is fifty nine. Thousand five thirty two square feet, and you need sixty five three forty. Uh, proposed lot twelve point oh one, which is Mr. Wasco's lot, needs thirty three five, um, seven fifty four. So that, those are two variances that are needed. Uh, there's also a lot depth. Um, variance for uh twelve point oh one, which is essentially that green line that runs up the middle. That's the, the length of that from the proposed right of way to the new rear. Right corner of twelve point oh one. The, another variance that is required, that is due to the, the right of way taking, um, is the. Front yard for proposed lot eleven point oh one, where it's nine feet, where you need twenty five. That is also where um, Mr. Kenny uh referred to the. Setback, the building height to setback ratio. Uh, just this week, we went out and measured his, that, that house, and. We came up with a building height to setback ratio of three to one point five, where. One to one point five is required, so, and I think it was originally calculated at four, but it's actually three when we, when we did the measurement in the field. Um, that is also the case. Uh, the building to setback. Ratio for the new house on new lot twelve point oh one, it needs the variance for the side and the rear. Um, and they were pointed out in the engineer's uh memo. Uh, and we agree with those numbers. Uh, I showed the most restrictive one on my plan of two to one point five, I think that's the sideline, the rear line, I think was uh. One point seven. To one point five, so it was, that was slightly over in the rear, and it's uh. Slightly over on the side yard. And I think that's, oh, there, there's one temporary easement that was mentioned. The temporary easement is from the historic home location right now to the right of way dedication. So. Uh, that variance will happen to go away, once the house is moved anyway, so. I think that's all the variances, other than the, the garage variance that you, that you, you talked, mentioned earlier.
Uh, Mr. Cohen has a question?
I, I'm feeling really dense right now, but. I need to ask for more explanation on. The height to setback variance for lot eleven. This is not Mr. Wasco's lot, but the other lot. The house is not moving. It's far from the property line that's moving. And yet.
Now, it's the front yard.
Somehow it's conforming now. Height to setback ratio, oh, it's because of the taking?
Yes, yep, yep, it, it's the distance from that yellow hatching to the green hatching.
Yep. By the, by the erasure of all this front yard, the, the ratio has kind of gone from. Close to conforming to, to kind of bonkers, unfortunately.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And then you can see where that, you, could you go back to that one, right? The, the, the temporary variance is from the red house on the left to the new taking too. That, that's the one that will go away once the house, once that house is moved.
Got it.
So with that, happy to have um, uh, any, any other questions uh for this, was before we get into the. Architecture, just as, as you noted, the, the um. The, the other, you know, the, the temporary variance he mentioned, as well as the other one that's not on the chart, is that. Um, the existing garage by moving the house behind it technically, this structure. Uh, which H B C has endorsed, you know, keeping, and there was some question about whether it would, but the, the plan had been to keep it. Um, a- as is, um, and to keep it its current location, uh, but because it is now. In front of the house, that becomes a accessory structure in a front yard setback.
Right. Any questions before we? From board members before we move to architectural um testimony? Uh, we, we, uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I think you were just gonna answer my question, but.
About taking a break? Yeah, I, I, you know, part of me wants to just plow ahead, but I know it, it, we're probably gonna be here. You know, maybe another hour given, I just don't want to shortchange things, so let's do, take a, a, a break, um. We'll make it ten minutes and, and please be uh prompt in, in returning, so. Excuse me?
Can we just make it five minutes?
Five, five minutes would work for me, um, a- and I, um. I, I understand you've uh been here a while already, is five minutes okay with other board members? Shaking heads, yes, yeah, okay, um.
Thank you.
Um, five minutes are as close to five as you can possibly make it, it's nine oh nine right now, thanks. So, nine fifteen, see you then.
Moving uh, guru, so uh, uh, Max, if you want to briefly um, uh. Remind the, the board that you've testified here in Princeton many times. Um, of your credentials as an architect and, and a little bit with your experience actually in relocating historic structures uh like this in New Jersey.
Certainly, and, and thank you, the board, for indulgence, I'm undergoing some treatments that leave me fatigued. So I appreciate the indulgence of making the break shorter. Um, um, my name is Max Hayden, and I'm an, I'm an architect, that's next night's meeting. I um. Have been an architect, licensed in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty six, I serve as chair of the Hopeful Township Historic Commission. Um, I have appeared before the Montgomery, Princeton, Hopewell, Pennington, Hope Township. Vernon, Warren Township, I've appeared to before many zoning boards. Uh, I've also had the extreme pleasure of moving my own house, uh, to get it away from the Mount Rose intersection. Um, and uh, I've helped move three or four other structures. And have helped elevate a few structures due to water concerns.
Yeah, we accept your qualifications.
Um, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, with apologies for the screen jarring in a second, I'll go back to our uh, our presentation and start with slide eighteen and Max, we can start talking about the um, the elevations, I think, of for the design of the um addition of the home.
Oh, the, the existing house is historic. It's kind of quirky. Uh, it's vernacular. A term that we architects use to describe local architecture. What makes the house so interesting is really the very low sloped roofs. And what we tried to do was not copy it, but kind of do a slightly more modern take of it. Uh Secretary of Interior Standards tells you not to replicate things, but to make it look different. So that's what we've kind of done and we're really providing the the new structure as a backdrop to the front structure. Uh, the, the front structure will be, remain red. And the thought is to paint the rear new addition, um something that will go on to recede into the landscape. So it'll be kind of a mossy green.
So it's on the, on the front, the right is the front elevation that would be facing the street. Um, you can see this is the existing historic home and you can see kind of peeking out behind it, the, the addition.
Correct. And I, I think when you'll see some of the model pictures, you might begin to understand that um with the way the ground slopes towards the street, that I think you will see m- mostly the historic structure. Uh, and again, you know, um perhaps laziness on the architect, but they're supposed to be siding on the addition. And it will match.
If I can interrupt for a second, um, th- these are part of the plan set, right? They do not have to be marking it as an exhibit.
Correct. That, that's, that's right.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Max.
No problem. And, you know, you can see that we have some slope issues, um that part of the uh rearmost garage is actually buried into the hillside somewhat. And, and that's with the location on the lot is requiring the height to setback ratio variance.
More plans here next?
The front piece that's not shaded in is the existing historic structure and we're, I mean, all the rooms are very small. We are extending the left wing approximately five feet um to make it a, a, a more comfortable room. Um we are relocating the kitchen and making it a more normally sized kitchen and a uh dining room, which Steve has really a little tiny breakfast room at the moment. And the two garages are to the rear. We did step them back um from each other to really downplay the massing. So even though the aggregate uh dimension of the garage might, might be what's that issue, the way we stepped it back is certainly tried to diminish the scale of things. Um, there is a loft connector. There'll be a little bit of a double height space um that will connect to the existing house. Um, the existing house, the ceilings at the, at the rear are l- less than my six foot three height. Um, and Steve is about the same height, so um neither of us can stand at the rear of the existing house. So although the addition looks big, it's m- more due to the fact that the existing house is really quite small and short in stature. Uh, we're adding a master suite or a owner's suite, as I like to call it, because the primary bath should be the hall bath, not the owner's bathroom. Um, and then there's a guest bathroom with an en suite bedroom. And uh the ubiquitous walk-in closet that we all desire. And there is a little study model. Steve rendered it with the colors that we're proposing to paint the structure. And you can see the Stony Brook Elementary School in the back, and you can see to the left how the garage does step back. So it's really not um as wide as one might think. That's the view uphill, looking down towards Stony Brook and towards two oh six. And these photographs were taken onsite approximate where it's being located. And of course, it doesn't look very realistic, but it gives you somewhat of an idea of what it will look like.
So our, our, our final substantive slide is the hope to try to explain the neighborhood character variance that is needed for the side entry garage. So um on the top left is the kind of form-based zoning monopoly house that was uh adopted to try to explain, we believe the, the concern with this particular item, which um, you know, for those of us who participated or, or watched along, there was a, a, a lot of discussion um at that time about uh visible, but one, street-facing garages, prominent garages and, and the massing of garages that was, was starting to appear a- around Princeton. And this provision came out of that discussion and uh requires, cause as shown on the left, the width of the garage to be a, a, a diminished as compared to the overall width of the house. Now, in our case, the garage is actually completely behind and screened by the house. And it's not, you know, I want to say front-facing, it's, it's side-facing, but it's not um visible at all. And um to, we, we could comply, actually, if you see on the, on the right, by if we were to pull that garage bay proud of the house and kind of expand the house, the percentage of house width that was taken up garage would actually decrease and we would comply. Uh, we tried to, and you know, in the model here show conceivably what that would mean by, you know, kind of boxing out um what that extra garage space would be in order to comply. And our, uh, the thinking was that ultimate, wh- whether that was the intention of the ordinance or not, our design um completely hides the garage, particularly, you know, if you're looking at this model uh, the two oh six in Stockton is to, to the right, um, providing uh really no visibility at all for the, for the side-facing garage. And it's a kind of an unfortunate just function of the house being quite narrow. In fact, just the width of the addition is basically the width of a garage bay. Um, so rather than expand the width of the house to comply, um, we feel that the variance makes more sense here than, than complying uh with that particular qua- requirement. Again, whether that, this was a problem that was intended to be solved with that provision or not, we, 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 we think perhaps not based on the, the visual representation of, of the concern uh in the neighborhood character code. Uh, but here, um, our architect very uh specifically tried to design a garage that couldn't be seen from the street and, and ironically complying with the provision by pulling it out would, would make it quite visible um to passing cars. Um, Max, anything you want to add to that as in your thinking of designing it? I know that the home is actually also slightly askew uh from, um, from Stockton as well, which further hides it. Um.
Yeah, it really um kills it so that the garage is a little less visible. There will be one garage that will be visible, but the garage door will be made out of uh the same material as the siding. So the thought is to make it blend away as much as possible.
And that garage that is visible, though, is actually compliant with the ordinance. It's the, it's the one in the back that is not.
Like the back, correct.
Um, Mr. Cohen?
I just want to offer perspective as a member of council.
Yeah.
That this provision is not in any way intended to prevent the, the kind of design that's being presented here tonight. I think we need to tweak the wording here. It should read the street-facing width of the garage should not exceed fifty percent of the width of the house, you know, of the street-facing width of the overall structure. I think that's the intent. Uh, and you know, I'm I'm just saying, I'm very much in support of the variance because it's completely compliant with the intent of the ordinance.
Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you for that perspective. Um. So is that it for you, Mr. Hayden? Oh, yeah, I see that it is.
It is. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
We're, we're all the way to the thank you slide. Are there um questions from board members for um any of the witnesses that have testified on this application? Um, so then, in that case, I guess, I guess I would turn now to our professionals, um Elizabeth Kim, Dan Weisman. Um, and since Dan's got his hand up, I will turn to you first. Hi, Dan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Um, I just had one question for uh Mr. Pavarnik. Um, and maybe Mr. Kennedy. Um, there is an existing sanitary lateral uh from lot twelve, that'd be Mr. Bryant's lot, that traverses across lot eleven. Um, and with this modification relocation, um staff would ask that sanitary easement also be granted uh for that existing lateral. The subdivision plan does show that lateral being relocated out of uh lot eleven. Um, but being that the subdivision will be perfected before any improvements are done. Um, I think it's beneficial to have that, that easement be granted.
Uh, yeah, our intention was to put a new su- a lateral in, so there is no easement, but I don't think we, we have an issue granting him the, the easement until that, that is done.
So the easement goes away once the lateral is relocated, removed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Does that, i- is that something that becomes a condition seems like to me? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Anything else, uh, Dan, that you want to mention, draw our attention to?
Uh, no further questions, just a couple of, of brief comments. Uh, there was a waiver from a fire protection plan. Uh checklist item. Uh, staff has no objection to the granting of that waiver. Um, and then also, uh, there was a staff comment uh asking the applicant to confirm the dimension for that height to setback ratio for uh lot twelve, Mr. Bryant's house, the existing house. Um, and just confirming that staff agrees with the uh dimensions provided today with the three to one and a half uh height to setback ratio.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Elizabeth Kim, maybe you can activate your camera and, oh, there you are. Um, can you summarize and uh, and Julie jump in um anytime? Uh, but I was going to ask Elizabeth to summarize the HPC's um thoughts about the um variances and that kind of thing, just sort of hit the high points of the uh, of the memo as opposed to reading it start to finish?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Um, so, I mean, the applicant and their professionals really provided a great uh coverage of what the, the reason for this minor subdivision. Obviously, it's intended to move this historic house to um uphill outside the flood hazard area. And they were so um grateful that the two neighbors were able to work together to make that happen. That's not always the case. And after Mr. Wasco had sustained three floods, you would think that he would say, okay, I'm done. But he's such a great steward of his historic property that HPC was so grateful that he continued to um look for a solution that he could stay in his house and retain the historic building. Have an opportunity to move it uphill if your board approves this subdivision with the variances. So HPC, you know, in conclusion, HPC wholeheartedly supported this application with the variances. They also approved the um the future site plan development of the moving of the house and the addition and the variances that went with that. Uh, the only other thing I would say is the, the variance for the neighborhood character, they also supported that. They felt that there was no negative impact on the historic property, the neighboring property or the historic district. Um, with their approval on that portion of the application, um, they did have some conditions. Nothing that I feel that we need to go into. A lot of it was, um, if you had an opportunity to read my report, there were a lot of things that um, were just cleanup on the plans, information, details, things like that. And the reason that the, that wasn't available to HPC is because we were trying to move the application to be heard right away. Otherwise, the applicant would have been able to address that. Um, the one thing that they would like, um, that might um, impact your review is that they would like a landscape subcommittee within the HPC to work with the applicant to discuss and review their landscape and their grading on site for it to be appropriate.
So maybe, maybe the planning board's landscape subcommittee can look at it and invite members of HPC's, um, you know, any, any member of HPC that has a particular interest in landscape to to attend as well. Uh, or are you suggesting that they work with the applicant before they come to landscape committee? I just, I, again, am wanting to not add extra steps for the applicant, given that we all, you know, want them to be able to move forward as quickly as possible.
Understood. Um, I guess what HPC was envisioning is they didn't realize that, that they needed to go to the landscape subcommittee, but they would serve with the HP, with the applicant to look at the design because the design was not available as far as the rain garden or the landscape around the property, and they are concerned about the appropriate grading. So the house still sits and still has the, the landscape within the historic property.
Elizabeth. Well, it, it doesn't automatically have to come to our uh planning board landscape subcommittee and, but even if it did, uh, the grading plan is not, not part of landscape subcommittee review. David?
Yeah, I mean, this just raises bigger questions for me about what exactly the formal, you know, what we're approving tonight and what the formal process is going forward. Because if we're approving not just the subdivision, but I guess by virtue of the zoning table, the bulk table that is on that subdivision plan, we're approving the variances tonight as well. I'm not sure the applicant ever comes back to any board because it's a, I mean, but I don't I see Brian raising his eyebrows.
No.
I mean, it's a single-family
Right.
Uh, you know, project that wouldn't ordinarily, if it's, and if it's conforming with the setbacks and so forth, you know, and height to setback ratios that we've approved tonight. I'm not sure why it comes back to any board. So Jerry.
I, I don't think it comes back to a board. I, I think you're absolutely right. And I know there was a little bit mentioned about site plan review. There wouldn't be any site plan review. It's a single-family uh house. So I think, and, and certainly the way we tried to set this up at or at the staff level, was this could all be done in one shot. Uh, and that they wouldn't have to do any further um applications before a board.
Mm-hmm. And if I could jump in, um, there are the municipal processes for tree removals. You know, we fully expect that they're gonna have to take down trees to move these houses. And then that goes through our uh tree removal permit. Uh, you know, which gets looked at by our engineering department, our arborist. Um, now, that being said, I, I think what Elizabeth is saying and what looks to be one of the conditions of the preservation plan approval is that the applicant works with the HPC. You know, I wasn't at that meeting. I, I don't know what exactly, you know, was uh required there, but I think that's very different than you know, requiring them to create a landscape plan and come back to the landscape committee of the planning board, when essentially what you would be doing tonight is approving the lot lines changing. With the variances, which, you know, obviously paved the way for the buildings that they're looking to do that have been approved by the HPC. Uh, but that's where the, the kind of distinction uh where there is a distinction from a, say, a, a site plan uh application.
And Justin, um, in terms of the, at the planning board landscape committee uh reviewing this, which would be fairly typical, and inviting, as um Louis suggested, the, the members of the HPC, what, what's your action to the, it seems to me that's a good way of proceeding. What do you think?
I mean, I, I don't think for a, you know, a single-family lot line adjustment that's fully necessary to come back to it. I mean, I think we, we have had landscape review of subdivisions before, so that's not just the reason why I'm saying it. Um, but you know, for something like this, uh, I, I think it can go through the municipal processes. It's not like this is, uh, you know, he's taking down acres and acres of, you know, forests and replacing them or having some. You know, forests and replacing them or having some sort of, you know, manicured. You know, gardens or anything like that. I think if the HPC is already covering it. And the. Our internal staff is covering the replacement, then we should be fine. But of course, that, you know. That would be up to the board if you truly believe that it should come back for. Full landscape plan and review.
Now, I don't feel strongly about asking for a full landscape plan. I would. Like to know a little bit more, and maybe this is why Mr. Hayden's hand is up about tree protection and grading and. That kind of thing. Mr. Hayden?
Thank you. And we will take the necessary steps to protect the existing trees that are to remain. Part of the HPC's concern was the existing house sits rather low to the ground. And they wanted to try to maintain that appearance as much as possible. So it really had to do with the grading at the very front of the relocated house. The other grading that has to be done to move water around the house and to fit with the site. Wasn't really an issue, was really specific to the front. And, you know, we represented that evening that we'd be more than happy to work with them on a landscape plan for the whole property. And do something that's in keeping with the structure and the neighborhood. So I think we would feel most comfortable working with the HPC. On this element.
Okay.
And I just want.
And for our members of Mr. Wasco, excuse me, go ahead.
I just want to say, if it helps your decisions, I've already had Taylor Sapudo out two times. And he, you know, verbally just really. Liked what I was doing with the trees, didn't, you know, his intent was, you know, was fine. And to what Max was just saying, my intent is to keep my property, the existing property as much as possible the way I've always had it. I don't really, you know, fulfill the requirements of replacement trees that are required by the statute. So, you know, it's, I'm not looking to do anything crazy in terms of firms or landscapes. So, you know, most of what's going on there is the DEP requirement with that water, with that, you know, water collection area. And I wish there was a way around that too, but that's, yeah.
And I talked Steve away from doing the multicolored fountain that lit up at night, so.
Elizabeth, are you, have you said what you wanted to say?
No, I just wanted to clarify to your board that. That's the way that HPC had reviewed this and were kind of charged to do this was to review the. The relocation and the addition. So your board would be knowledgeable. That they had approved it or imposed any type of design. Changes that might impact the variance that they are requesting. So that's the reason that we had, you know. We had provided that information to you and the HPC had reviewed it that way. Because I think everyone was hoping that the applicant would. Finish with your board today and not have to return again to any other board.
Got it. David?
And could I ask Elizabeth a question? Elizabeth, assuming that's the case, would that include? No further review by a subcommittee, a landscape subcommittee of the HPC?
Well, we did, and the applicant had agreed that they would work with the subcommittee to work on the landscape and grading, right?
Okay.
But what I meant is they didn't need to go back to zoning board or planning board for any other variances. And hoping that your board would be able to approve all of it as part of this minor subdivision.
David?
Yeah, I guess I'm just. Wanted to offer, I think that. Again, for conforming, single family. Residents in a historic district. HPC does have final. Say, does have final determination. And so, you know, this is a funny kind of a hybrid because.
Yeah.
Their advisory to the planning board, if. It's a planning board site plan, I know, but. You know, so this is kind of a, it's kind of a strange in between, but I would feel very comfortable sort of saying. You know, the planning board takes action on this subdivision tonight. With the variance relief. And then. It sounds like the applicant has very amicable relationship with HPC. And HPC would ordinarily have jurisdiction over a single family home in a historic district. And we're just out of it after tonight.
And I would just add to that, you know, if there was any concern, which there certainly isn't. That this was some sort of bait and switch to get these variances and then build something completely different. Because this property is in that locally designated historic district. Anything that they build is going to have to go through the HPC. You know, if they were to change from this, or if they were to try to do that bait and switch, it just wouldn't happen.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Other questions? From anybody? I will. Ask members of the public of, there are three, oh, sorry, Freddie, Freddie's hand went up, Freddie Pearl Mutter, you're on mute still.
I was just wondering, even if we can't put any more, you know, we can't bring them back, can we put? And I guess this is really for Jerry. Can we put some conditions in the. Resolution that they will conform with this? And if invited, we might be able to have somebody from the planning board sit on that. Or I'm just making things up. I don't know exactly what. But is there some way that we can put in the? Conditions, some, since they're not coming back, some way of saying that we, you know, we want to make sure that they. Are going to meet these requirements. I know they're obligated to do it, but this is not the typical application.
Yeah. That's certainly reasonable. I mean, certainly the expectation is that they presented a plan. And it includes site elements. It also includes architectural elements, and they're going to comply with that. And we can certainly put that in the resolution.
Yeah, but I.
And delegating to, as David was explaining, since this is sort of a. An odd kind of hybrid situation, delegating the. And given that the applicant is amenable to this. The. Working with a subcommittee of HPC, which has. Jurisdiction in a way when it comes to. You know, this issue that we're talking about makes sense.
Yeah.
Julie? Did you want to add? Julie, as everybody probably knows, is Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'll report back to the planning board if there's any. Deviation from our approval, but I also wanted to really commend Mr. Wasco because. I think he's been through an extraordinary amount of difficulties with. Climate change, with easements and takings and all kinds of crazy stuff happening. And I really think it is best that we finish all of the business here tonight and let him go ahead and do this project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. And thanks for, thanks for the reassurances about reporting back. I'm sure people will be curious how it all goes. David?
Yeah, I just wanted to, along the lines of what Julie was saying, I attended a couple of years ago. A conference of the New Jersey Association of Flood Plane Managers. And the keynote speech was about retreat. In the face of climate change and how difficult that is. And this is. The first time that I've actually seen a retreating building. So it's a. I'm not sure that's what they were referring to at the conference, but it's kind of interesting to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It certainly seems to fall into that category.
It's the way we need to, you know, compared to. Other ways of dealing with. This flooding, you know, where people are elevating their buildings, you know, 10 feet in the air. Or rebuilding over and over in the same flood prone shore communities. And we all taxpayers are paying for the insurance.
And again, and again.
To let them, yeah, keep on doing, you know, the same thing. So this is exemplary from a resiliency and sustainability standpoint, as well as historic standpoint.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just like to pick up on Julie's point to say that we. I would recommend being careful that when, if conditions are at it. That they don't complicate the process for Mr. Wasco. To go and be able to subdivide his land first. And then do whatever he needs to do after. So obviously, if the condition was something like. I don't know, he's got to build the house exactly as he said it before he could subdivide. That's going to be a problem. So, you know, I just want to point that out when we get to the conditions, which are probably coming up soon.
Yep. So I want to open the meeting to public comment, if any members of the public, and there are three members of the public attending. Any of you wish to address the board? Now is the time to virtually raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any hands go up. Going once, going twice. Okay, I will close the. Public comment portion of the hearing and. Move back to the board, so. I think the consensus, the very strong consensus here is that we. Do what we can to facilitate this project moving ahead. Expeditiously and haven't heard anything to the contrary. I do think that we should. Go through conditions. For. An approval of this minor subdivision. With variances and lot line adjustment. Jerry, do you want to? Itemize conditions?
Yeah, certainly. Okay, just, I'm going to start with the reports, but there's not going to be that many of them. Justin, applicant will need to file a tree removal permit subject to review. I mean, that's required anyway, but I think we should put it in. Note A to the minor subdivision plan should be corrected. It states site is not located in the historic district or historic buffer district. And that would just be corrected. Zoning table should be updated. This is from Dan and Derek's. Memo. Okay. Applicant is required to file an engineering site plan review application. Is that right? I don't think so here. Justin, what do you think?
Mr. Muller, if I may.
Yeah, yes.
An engineering site plan review application is an administrative review process. It's not a site plan application through a zoning board or planning board. That is typically for review of new houses, building additions. And it mainly deals with review of stormwater management measures as required by ordinance.
Okay, so we'll put that in. That's your 4.0 number two. And then. The applicant is required to obtain an NJDEP flood hazard area control act permit. Still correct? Then I'll get to the sanitary sewer easement shall be vacated. New sanitary easement shall be dedicated to municipality based on the actual lot. The actual location of the sanitary sewer main and shall be described and meets and bounds on each lot. Okay, then we have the one for the lateral. Which will be temporary until the lateral is. Eliminated. Legal descriptions of the two lots. Subdivision plot shall be provided to the engineering department in digital format. Update tax map, this is typical stuff. The documents approved by the planning board attorney. Okay. Applicants shall submit to the Mercer County Planning Board in New Jersey. DEP for Department of Transportation for approval. Has that been done?
Formal ones, but yes, and that's unfortunately how we resulted in so much less property.
Yeah, okay. Let me just go over my notes.
Freddie, you need to unmute yourself?
All right, I guess I really didn't want to talk. Jerry, go back once, one condition with the temporary easement. Well, with the temporary lateral, they'll grant a temporary easement to the neighbor next door for access until it disappears.
Yes.
We'll talk about that.
That's the sanitary sewer. That's going to be relocated outside of this subject property.
Right, and that will disappear at some point, but if I understood what they were saying, in the interim. The neighbor is going to need, not necessarily, but may need access. To the easement.
Yeah, so there's that temporary easement. Ryan, you're on mute too. Ryan, you're on mute. There you go.
I'm just nodding in agreement that the. As Mr. Weisman and Mr. Bridger put out, makes sense, and we would.
So I thought you were talking about you were just eating crackers or something, is that?
Sorry, yeah, I have a bowl of peanuts here.
Sorry, your square, everybody's square is really small. Go ahead, go ahead, Jerry.
Another condition will be HPC recommendation D, that's the one about the subcommittee of HPC dealing with landscaping.
Yeah, the applicant agrees to work with the HPC's subcommittee to address certain grading and landscape questions. I mean, I think that's what we're talking about. Is that? Is that accurate? Yeah.
That's correct.
Was not requiring a landscape plan that comes back.
Yeah.
To our landscape subcommittee.
Right, right. Yep, exactly.
It also seems that that's a condition of the HPC's approval.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Is that correct?
I was just referring to the HPC.
Yes.
Yes, that would be, we don't have our resolution for that, but that would be in there.
So it's already going to be covered by that?
Right, yeah, that's what I actually articulated for this.
Correct.
It's conditioned.
So are you suggesting it needs to go in both and be worded the same, or that it just doesn't need to be an hour?
It doesn't need to be an hour.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just because I don't want that to cause any subdivision issues.
That's fine. Thank you, Justin. And then. The applicant, Mr. Wasco, will comply with the site and architectural elements that presented to the board. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Julie, is moving to approve this minor subdivision with variances.
In these conditions.
Lot line adjustment with these conditions laid out by Mr. Muller, who would like to second?
I'd like to second.
Thank you, Ms. Nuka.
I just want to make. I just want to make sure. I don't know, Jerry, did you make, I don't think anybody made reference to all the variances that had been requested. I want to make sure that the resolution of approval.
Right.
Refers to the variance, the.
Oh, absolutely.
Variances that are documented in the application.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And the motion included the variances.
Oh, it did, okay.
Okay, Ms. Philip, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Excellent. Wasco, thank you so very much for what you're doing. It is a labor of love, I'm quite sure. Thank you, Mr. Hayden, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you very much.
I hope I didn't mangle your name too badly.
Thanks to the board for approving the minor subdivision from HPC.
Yes, thank you for, thank you for all your work on it as well. So we'll be back here next week. 6:30 executive session, 7 o'clock meeting. Thanks, thanks, everybody. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen.
Claudia, do you want to do it?
I'm ready to just fail.
Move to adjourn.
Segmented by Ms. Anderson, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thanks, good night.
Thanks, good night.